I'm going to call the meeting to order. The time is 5:30 on Monday, January 25th. This is a regular monthly meeting of the DC Commission on Arts and Humanities, held in open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, using the Cisco WebEx virtual meeting platform. The next regular meeting will be held on Monday, February 8th. I am Kate Kenbow, Chair of the Commission of Arts and Humanities. I'm going to call the roll. Alma Gates. You may be muted, but I see you, Alma. Can you hear me, Alma?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Cece. Can I hear you, Cece? Cora. Gretchen?
Gretchen's here, and she's trying to get Cora on.
Jose?
Yeah.
Kimber. Kimber? Mariah. Natalie. Rona. Stacy. Quanice. Maggie?
Present.
Carla. Well, guys, this is a bad, uh, roll call. We don't have a quorum, but I will proceed and come back to that.
If I can just interrupt, Kate, real quick, there's three people that are on the phone. I don't know if some of those are commissioners. I, I really can't tell.
Well, it, it won't matter. They need to be present. That's not considered present for the circumstances of voting, I don't think.
Okay.
So, um, I will read the land acknowledgement before we proceed. Uh, every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hopes of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and differences. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral grounds within the Nakachtenk, the Piscataway people. We pay respects to their elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Appreciate those words. They were given to us by Quanice. I'm wondering, uh, Cece, I'm, I'm going to go back and call the roll. I see that you're here. Can you hear me?
I'm here.
Great. Derek, are you here? Jose? Kimber? Mariah? Natalie? Rona?
Uh, yes, finally.
Thank you. Stacy? Quanice? Carla. I think it might be that the way we get on now is, is different. It's a little more convoluted than the past. And Patrick, I don't know if we have to, uh, I mean, we all get used to it, but I can imagine why we're missing so many people.
So, um, we can address, um, for the public speak or the attendees. So the four people on the phone, I don't know if some of those are commissioners. So I actually unmuted them, so they should be able to talk and identify themselves.
Is there any commissioner that's on the phone listening who I've been calling the role? Who needs to let me know they're there? So I think we need at least three more commissioners.
It's really hard to get on. I downloaded it. Patrick? Is there?
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
I downloaded everything a few days ago. It said it was approved. It came from you, and then today it wouldn't let me in at all. I had to download everything again, follow, follow three more steps, and then open it. I mean, that's really burdensome for people.
Okay, um, so I added all the commissioners and select staff to be panelists so that you guys could just join that way. And as a backup, I had also done the general attendee in case people joined that way. And I would just put your status as a panelist after you guys got in. So apologies about that. We can discuss better strategies moving forward.
Let me try again. Has Cora joined up?
No, she's still trying. We're trying to figure this out together.
It's very hard to get in.
I understand that. We all do know that, Rona. Derek? Jose? Kimber? Mariah? Natalie? Stacy? Quanice? Carla. Well, we'll just have to wait a few minutes because we can't even, uh, forward without a form.
Okay, um, I'm still trying. Patrick, what's happening, um, is that it keeps saying start your event. That's not working.
Right, exactly.
She's using the, so the link, the first link that I gave you, provided her via email, is the panelist link. So when she goes there, it'll ask her to put in her first name, last name, and the email address. If she, in the Gmail address, it should let her just join the meeting because I did it on my end in my browser, so.
So hold on a second. So she goes into the first link you sent, the very first, right? Because we've got three or four here now.
The, just the last one, the most recent one that I sent at the beginning of this meeting.
The most recent link that he sent at the beginning of the meeting going about. And let's close everything up. Yes, do Gmail.
I'm reaching out to a few people, too. Yeah, um, Jose can't get on, says his link isn't working.
Okay, I can just resend these panelist links that they'll, they'll fill out and then have to put in their information again. It should let them join.
So, so everybody delete the previous links and just start over again as opposed to refreshing?
Wait, we don't have to leave, do we?
No, not us.
No, no, no.
I mean, people are not on.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sending Jose, and I just sent Quanice the, the panelist link again, so.
And Stacy's coming, she said.
And Cora's still trying.
Okay.
You said.
I, I sent it to Cora already, to her five email addresses, so.
So all of them should work? Any of them should work?
No, the, she should use the Gmail one.
You think I do? How, how is that?
Maggie, Quanice, Rona, Alma.
It's eight people. It's eight people.
Jose, Gretchen, Derek.
Is Derek on? I don't have Derek. Okay, you're right. That's who we're waiting for. Yay, thank you. Okay, you can proceed. So to those coming late, we've introduced the meeting. We've called the roll, and we've read the land acknowledgement. Uh, the agenda for this meeting has been circulated to all commissioners. Are there any objections to the agenda as it stands?
Not for me.
No.
Hearing no objections, the agenda stands as adopted. Uh, approval of the minutes. The minutes have been circulated to all commissioners. And the regular minutes from December 14th. Are there any objections to those as they stand?
No.
No.
Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Um, the minutes for the meeting, the special meeting for December 21st have been circulated to all commissioners. Are there any objections to those minutes?
No.
Hearing none, then, uh, they will be adopted and stand as approved. So next, we want to welcome Beth Shiba Smithen. Uh, she has come to speak to us from the public period. Uh, Beth Shiba, we give people about three minutes, and we don't usually respond at turn to just tell us what's on your mind. So welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. Um, as was stated, I'm Beth Shiba Smithen. I've had the pleasure of connecting with, um, Patrick and look forward to meeting with Allery tomorrow concerning our programs. I am the CEO and founder of Cage Free Voices, an international multi-service educational entertainment company that educates youth and adults who struggle with self-image and identity. And we do that by way of constructing powerful learning experiences. Our overall vision is one where all people are engaged in learning. The educational digital divide, the educational digital age came in like a hurricane along with the tsunami of racial tension exposing the gaps. Parents are scrambling to shuffle the hand given them, filtering through loads of packets and emotions while trying to hold up a profession, and that's if they still have a job. School districts are grappling with whether to reopen or continue with digital learning. If we are overwhelmed, our children are drowning due to the weight of our decisions that have anchored them in tumultuous seas of despair. Children all over the globe are forced to remain separate from their friends. Many social outings are canceled. They have had to end a school year abruptly with a significant change. 100% online learning. Many were not, were not prepared for this, especially not children of non-white ethnic origin. Social media videos, television, and race, and radio stations expose the positive and negative intentions of those in charge of educational content while we hardly ever see people of color triumph in our textbooks, while African-American children in particular have been experiencing deficits for years. It is sporadic that one will see an African-American, Mexican-American, Latin American, or Native Laotian for their inventions and contributions to society and educational materials, or that we will see opportunities for our students to artistically express themselves in core subject areas. The performing arts are often electives instead of embedded in required classes. If children can't see themselves in what they are learning, how do we expect them to engage? In June of 2020, we conducted a pilot study that incorporated the performing arts culturally sensitive and diverse learning and social and emotional learning into core subject areas. Students show remarkable outcomes. Of the 10 students who took both pre- and post-test, eight out, out of 10 students grew between one and three reading levels within one month or less. The remaining two students incurred limiting factors. One, a power outage while testing, and the other, lack of supervision during testing and shifts in family structure. Unlike other online learning platforms, CFE Online Learning's instructors, curricula, and tools make learning fun by incorporating music, games, and inclusive, relatable content for all ages. Parents and students are beginning to recognize more the value of a blended learning model that reflects students of various ethnic backgrounds and the performing arts. Education has always been on the cusp of shifting into a digital model, and we have been burgeoning at the seams with an incredulous attitude toward cultural needs. We have remained hesitant to accept the inevitable changes that are here, but we are at a point of no return where we no longer embrace practices that only focus on academics and exclude other cultures and the, and the performing arts. Granted, while there will continue to be some remnants of how things used to be, we look forward to better days ahead and hope to serve your community.
It's really great to hear that because that's a huge service and a timely one. So thank you, Beth Shiba. Thank you for letting us know what you're doing.
Thank you.
Let me find the agenda myself. Um, I, I'm not going to take any time to really to go into a report. I've been, uh, working with Heron on various initiatives. Uh, one initiative that, uh, is to get out there and meet with each council member, let them get to know the good work we're doing in their wards. Uh, that's gotten started. She's set up some appointments for that. There are other things, but I think mainly I'm just working with her on, um, the programs that she's going to report on in her report. So I'm going to turn it over to Heron. She's got some good news, and I wanted to give her plenty of time to share it.
Thanks so much, Kate. Um, good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody again. Um, I think most of you would have received my director's report, but I think what I'll do is just focus on, um, three main areas just to sort of delve a little bit deeper. Um, the first area is, is agency developments. This, these are plans that we had started to kind of think about back in 2019 in October, uh, really focused on building a collaborative environment, uh, work environment and culture here at the agency. Um, and so I have had been in conversation with a colleague at the DCHR Center for Learning and Development that does these kinds of trainings and workshops. Um, and we have been going back and forth, kind of planning it and figuring out what the pieces would look like. And so we're ready now to launch it. I have shared it with staff at our staff meeting a week ago. Um, and so these are a set of workshops that have themes such as mindful communication, uh, Strength Finder, um, uh, the Myers-Briggs, uh, type indicator exercise. Partly the thinking around this is, you know, sort of to, to create more of a gel, um, you know, in, in all of these environments that have changed on us since COVID, working outside of the office away from, uh, you know, where we can see each other and interact. Uh, partly also, it is just sort of to, to signal, um, you know, sort of an intention behind cultivating a collaborative work environment and a place that people feel that they belong in and that they are thriving in and, and being, feel supported in. Um, and then also to just sort of, uh, be cognizant of the fact that new staff members are coming onboard, um, in this COVID setting now, uh, sort of remotely, uh, with very little, um, interaction with the rest of staff. So I think this is timely on many levels, and, and, uh, I'm really looking forward to, uh, having us all participate and, and, uh, go through the training. Uh, that will begin, uh, the first session is on February 11th. There will also be some specific sessions that, uh, will focus on, uh, department heads and managers, um, and, uh, providing tools for them. Uh, but most of the other stuff is, 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 these are workshops that we all would be participating in. The other piece I'll focus on, the second piece I'll focus on and go a bit deeper on is the, uh, the CAH DC Arts Teletown Hall, uh, Community Engagement Program. Um, I think Jeff would have already sent invitations out to commissioners. We had, last check was last week, uh, Friday, late Friday. We had over 300 people already RSVP, um, to, to, uh, attend. This is a virtual program, and it's intended to, uh, sort of launch, uh, some new initiatives, uh, with, to the community, um, and, and, you know, kind of create an occasion to interact with the community. Um, so, uh, you know, we'll hopefully be taking a group photo at the end of this meeting of commissioners as well that we'd like to have included in the slides that we present. Uh, but mainly it's also to sort of push out, uh, community engagement, uh, initiatives that we've been working on also since, you know, it's been a few months, uh, since about October of this year. Um, we have three different tracks that are going to be rolling out. Uh, the one track is sort of Business in the Arts, uh, which was an existing track, um, that used to sort of focus on, um, tools and resources for individual artists that are, uh, looking to, um, um, you know, create, uh, businesses, small businesses, and, uh, find ways of, of monetizing some of their, um, art activities. Um, this year, what we're doing is, is adding another sort of, uh, element to the Business in the Arts series. Uh, this is an element that is going to be specific to organizations that will bring panelists and discussants through that would talk about some of the, uh, challenges that organizations are facing in this time and, uh, provide resources for, for how to tackle those. Um, our CAH in the community track is designed to sort of embed our staff members in the community, embed quote unquote, um, with, uh, you know, mainly to sort of provide, uh, more access to staff members, um, and sort of have, uh, uh, you know, bring visibility to the commission and the work of the agency, um, in preparation for, uh, the upcoming grant, uh, cycle partly as well. Um, the third track that we're engaged in, uh, for community outreach is the Artist Showcase Track. Um, and this, this was interesting because, uh, it's a track that is designed to, uh, mainly sort of showcase, um, and, and sort of turn the spotlight onto our, uh, grantee artists and humanities practitioners. Um, the, uh, the way we went about doing that was sort of, we ran a survey, a brief survey, uh, that we sent out to our grantee artists, and we got about 200 respondents. It lasted maybe a, a week or so, and, and they wrote back. We asked questions, uh, of, uh, what would they like to see happen? Uh, what opportunities would they like to see, uh, to share their artwork? And, and what approach made sense? Um, we asked if they'd like to have this be artist-driven or managed by the, uh, commission? Um, and, and also just what resources are needed? And, and what, what would they, uh, really want to see that would speak to their, uh, needs? And so we got a really good set of responses back. Um, we, we sent it out to artists in various, uh, art disciplines, um, and quite a lot of what came back focused on opportunities for networking, um, opportunities to work with other artists in the district, uh, within their discipline and, and, and outside of their discipline across disciplines. Uh, there was also, uh, a focus on professional development opportunities that was requested, and then a really sort of strong focus on, uh, space and, and space use, uh, that came back from artists. So some of these are things that are immediate and short-term, and other, other pieces are, are sort of long-term pieces that we can, we can work on, uh, in responding to, uh, what our artists are, are sharing with us. Um, some of the topic areas for Business in the Arts, um, there's one that's rolling out, uh, in a couple of days, uh, that's focused on legal issues for artists around live streaming. Uh, we have our, uh, usual sort of copyright and trademark, uh, focused sessions. Uh, we do this in, in partnership with the Washington area, uh, for, uh, lawyers in the arts, uh, who provide some of these, uh, workshops. Access and inclusion is another theme. Um, online art market and selling on, online is another theme. For organizations, we have themes like resilience and sustaining staff, um, in times of crisis. Uh, we have a technology roundtable about how to keep community connected, um, in these, in these virtual times. And then we have, uh, a series of, of workshops around public art projects because those are harder and more complicated to apply for. Um, just sort of beginning to, uh, you know, plant the seeds in people's minds about what all is needed and how one would go about submitting a successful application. Um, for CAH in the community, some of the topic, uh, topic areas are, uh, a sort of deeper dive into our art bank collection for visual artists who might be interested in, um, uh, becoming a part of, of the, uh, the, the, uh, collection that we have. Um, and then there are some other sort of sessions around grant application, how one develops a successful grant application, um, and networking, providing networking opportunities for arts education professionals. Again, these are not in, in lieu of our grant workshops. These are actually, as the timing goes, these are going to happen before the grant cycle hits and before the workshops, uh, specific to grant programs kind of roll out. So they're, they're timed to happen between February and, and early May. Um, and we have a good 22 sessions or more that are planned and scheduled right now. And then the final one for Artist Showcase, uh, we're, you know, sort of teaming it around, uh, happenings out, outside of, you know, sort of in the, in the, in the calendar, in the shared calendar. March being Women's History Month, uh, will feature, um, an exhibition, uh, that features women photographers, uh, photographing Washington. Um, and then in April, we're, we're going to look at, um, showcasing, uh, poets, literary artists, and jazz, as those are the National Poetry and Jazz Month is, is April. Um, so those are what we have planned, and we'll roll it out on Thursday and, uh, you know, keep track of, of how the community is responding to these initiatives. Um, and adjust, you know, hopefully we'll learn from, from this first experience and, and continue to hone in on, on what works. The last I'll speak to is the, uh, sort of CAH Meet and Greet that we've had opportunity to, uh, speak to, um, a couple of, of council members. And, uh, Council Member Brooke Pinto from Ward 2 happened to come into the office of, to, at the end of last year. I guess it already is, wow, in December of last year to pick up some artwork for her office. Uh, so we got to chat with her a little bit, and our staff member, uh, Ron Humbertson, um, facilitated her, her request. Um, I was also invited to the, uh, Council Member, uh, former Council Member Brandon Todd's office to meet with the Arts, Humanities, and Creative Economy Committee, a group of, um, um, you know, sort of community members who are in the arts and the humanities, uh, that are, the group is co-chaired by, uh, George Koch, Coke, and Joy Austin Ford. Um, and so we had a really good conversation around, uh, our thoughts and plans and, and what, you know, the direction CAH is moving in, and, uh, and they seem a really, you know, engaged group of people to work with. I look forward to, uh, more conversations, uh, with them. Um, today, we met with Council Member, uh, uh, Trayon White's office with Ward 8, Kate and I, uh, this afternoon, and, and, uh, shared some information about funding for Ward 8 organizations and individuals and responded to some of the questions that they had around, uh, grant, grant funding and, and, uh, access to applying. Um, and they promised to, uh, keep us informed about community meetings that we could present, um, our grant, uh, processes to. Um, so we're looking forward to that. Um, I think I'll stop there. I, I would like to really thank all of our staff members who've been working on these outreach ideas. We had, uh, groups working across departments and really sort of take the lead and run with, uh, the ideas. Since October, meeting regularly in small groups and bigger groups, um, to, uh, push these ideas forward. So, um, I would really like to acknowledge their hard work in, in getting to this endpoint to roll this out on Thursday as well. Thank you.
Haron, can I ask?
Yes, please.
I thought we spoke a few months ago that you were going to invite, um, commissioners to join in these meetings with Kate.
Um, I'm sorry, Rona, to, to say that again. I, your voice faded away.
I know. I'm circling in and out, so, I mean, and so are you. Commissioners were going to be invited to go talk to various council members.
We can still do that. What we've done is just try to get through to their staffers to get the dates in place so we can open it up for commissioners to participate.
You've already had, you've already had. So can, can you include commissioners?
We've had one. We've had one.
Yeah, we just had one today. The dates keep shifting about as part of the issue, but yes, we'd be happy to include commissioners.
Haron, you seem a little bit far away from your microphone. It's a little bit hard to hear you.
Okay. We're, we'll be happy to include. Okay, we'll we'll be happy to include commissioners, Rona. Um, we've just had the first one today and the dates keep shifting. This one is like the third attempt. It it did, yeah, the date shifted four times. So it's hard to, but that is okay. We can let everybody who wants to, is the appropriate person per ward, we can let them know and they can move around with the date too.
Yeah, exactly. And then for Mendelson, you can ask the commissioners, any commissioner who wants to meet with him should be able to. There's no one ward for that one.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
We vote.
Haran, I have a question. This is Quanise in regards to the community engagement pieces. I know you spoke of, um, well, can you clarify? Because I just want to make sure I heard it right, that you're asking folks um to participate in like panels, like people from arts organizations and then also like, can you um, when I see Artist Showcase, I think of performing, so is that a piece of it? And then if so, for both, um, are we paying people uh some type of honorarium for that? Because it's hard times for arts and culture sector.
Yes, we are paying, we are paying this an honorarium to all presenters. Um, and um it is both for the presenters, it it's a mixed bag. Some are arts administrators, some are uh artists who do theater, literature, poetry, music and so on. So it's a range of folks and we are planning to to pay uh a smaller honorarium, yes.
Okay, and is the Artist Showcase where they're showcasing their art? Or is it more so the opportunity for professional development for them to participate in? That's why I kind of got confused.
Okay, so the the two programs, we haven't quite kind of fleshed out a whole lot of programs for the showcase quite yet. Mainly because we're trying to figure out how to respond to the survey, how to kind of match up the programming to what we're learning from the survey. The two or three programs we've already planned on though are uh, the one is going to feature uh a a panel uh for an exhibition on women photographing um Washington in uh in March. So it's a panel of photographers and the curator who would be doing that presentation. And then um in April and in April, it'll be uh literature artists, spoken word and poetry artists along with uh jazz musicians. That's as far as we've gotten for the showcase thus far. So i- it does also involve um, you know, sort of access to an online uh format and being able to uh, you know, we've thought about studio visits as one possibility, but we have to be sure that uh we're set up to do that, you know, where we can film them and and have uh good quality sort of footage to to put on the uh for the presentation. So we're still kind of feeling our way through all of that.
And they're being paid too, right?
Anyone who's participating as uh as a presenter is going to be paid.
Okay.
Are there more questions?
I do have a small logistics uh logistical que- uh question. Is it possible in the director's report that we can put the commission's mission and Haran's priorities at the top? Because I think that helps keep it focused, so when we're going through the report, we can see how it aligns to her priorities um for whatever year we're in.
That's a good idea.
It's a great idea.
Hey, I, Kay, I also have a question. Um, I ran into Chairman Mendelson at a COVID event in the city and he came over and said hello and mentioned that he was going to arrange for members of the cohort to present to the commissioners. Are you aware of that? Has that been scheduled?
Uh, yes, wait, it it, but let's stay on the agenda, Maggie. Is that something that pertains to Haran's report or?
Yeah, it relates to outreach to the council.
Okay. Okay, so ask your question again, please.
The question is whether um Chairman Mendelson's office was coordinating a meeting for the cohort leaders to present to the commissioners in a future meeting. Because he mentioned that was something that he was trying to organize.
For the for the cohort leaders to do what?
Present to the commissioners as a whole to one of our future meetings?
I see, well.
Is this the NACOC cohort, I think?
Correct.
Oh, thanks.
That's that's one cohort. You know, we're we're working with NACOC to uh uh make some changes to the legislation. We've talked to Phil about that. That's one of the things that's been happening. And um when we think that we've gotten an agreement, we want to present it. And at that time, we want people from the arts community and all the various cohorts to be there too. So that everybody is at one meeting, hears everything at the same time. But that'll probably happen in March. We're not ready for that, but we're working to get ready for it.
Yeah, he just mentioned it to me unsolicited. He just approached me and said that he was coordinating that and was thought that was an important meeting to do, so I just wanted to offer it to make sure everyone was aware of it since he mentioned it to me directly um and felt a sense of urgency about it.
We, these these meetings with council members though, uh Maggie, is is uh is slightly separate from that. This is sort of a, you know, at the beginning of a fiscal year, doing the rounds with the council members kind of thing. So the two things aren't connected necessarily. Um, this is just sort of a word-by-word report that we offer to council members and uh and a check-in kind of around um grants funding and and what's happening in their ward. So they're on two separate tracks. I I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, but I think they're kind of related because each of the wards will have a vested interest in understanding the overall funding structure, um because it impacts each of the wards differently. Um, so I do see them as related.
Well, when we meet with them, that's what we want to talk to them about too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you think March is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and my personal goal is that by March, I hope we have a presentation to make that will adjust the legislation that we've all been complaining about. And um I think the representation certainly from the COC is interested to work with us and help make those changes. And we want the people at that meeting that aren't just from that group, but other groups in the community.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are there any other questions particularly pertaining to the chairman's report or the director's report? Then uh we're gonna move to finance update and I'll call on Cece.
I am gonna have to keep this brief because I don't know how quiet she's gonna be. Um, but um I just wanted to uh point everyone to the um, yeah, to the uh documents that Brian provided. And I just want, I actually wanted to pour some of my time because I know we have a lot to cover over grants. But if Brian could just update us on where we are and I had a, I think my only other question was if we were all reconciled for 20. Um, but otherwise, I don't have anything to add.
Brian?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, so to answer the first, the second question first.
Can can you get closer to your microphone, Brian?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me better now? Is that better?
Much better.
Okay, in regards to fiscal year 20, here, we have not produced the CAFRA, which is the annual report yet. That is due out next month. Uh, so we would know exactly where we stood with uh the funding for 20. But with regards to the current fiscal year, uh, we are, the two reports would reflect that we are scheduled to issue at least $31 million in grants this year. Um, initially, we started the year with a restriction. Um, but at this point, there is no restriction, so uh we, the um, we, the um, what will happen next is up to, in terms of how the programs will be, how the restrictions being lifted will impact all of the associated programs. Yes, uh, the only other thing that I can actually give as well is that we're doing, we we're progressing very nicely in terms of the actual grants of 620 grants and that's excluding what we were going to issue in uh facilities and buildings. We have issued uh 450 grants already and which we should be uh in the neighborhood of $450 to $600 probably by the end of the week. So like I said, we're progressing very nicely in terms of that.
Good. Well, it's really good news that everybody's been shopping a lot, that our budget is restored for the moment. That's what I heard you say, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That's very, very good news.
That's correct.
And it's good news that you're getting the money out to the community because I know they have to wait longer than they'd like often. Uh, are there any other messages or, I mean, questions for Brian or for Cece? Well, then Gretchen, we'll call on you for grants.
I'm sorry, Kay?
Okay, can you just call me on my cell phone?
Hello?
Gretchen, you're up.
Okay, so let me um switch to the.
Can we mute everyone but Gretchen?
Whoa, that's tiny.
Uh, which which one was it that you needed, Gretchen?
The first, the first one that says um grant funding recommendations. It's before that. Before.
This one?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, everyone, this is the um recommendations from the Grants Committee that met for facilities and buildings. Now, we have two facilities and buildings. We call them FAB grants. One is traditional and one is for relief. Relief is still out. It has not come back in. Um, this is for the traditional facilities and buildings uh grant, so let's make sure we know which one we're talking about. Okay, the Facilities and Buildings Grant supports qualified organizations that own or rent facilities, intend to own or rent facilities or seek other permanent property or equipment designed for training, management, production or rep- or presentation of performances or exhibitions of the arts and humanities. The allocated budget recommendation um from 2019, it was 1.6. 2020, 3.9, and this year it was down to 2.8. Uh, the recommended scenario, which is the one we're going with, so that we'll have 28 awardees. Um, we ended up having three panels and the panels were divided um by cohort of organizational size budget. A total of 48 applications. FY20, we had 39, so we had more this year. Um, the grant managers in charge are Benjamin Douglas and Kevin Passer. I don't know if Benjamin's on the call, but Kevin's the one that worked with us for the last three call reviews, so I'm gonna ask him to chime in shortly. And we had three commissioner conveners because the panels were held all day for three different days. That was Rona, Kay and myself. For FY21 FAB traditional program updates, nearly half the budget, $2 million, $2 million was allocated to Fab Relief Program. So we we spun off some of the money that was allocated to Fab and made it Fab Relief. FY21 received nine more applications over 20 and of the 48, six are applied to CAH for the first time this fiscal year. Fab ranking and award justification is continued on the next page. So we need to go up. Okay, thank you. Okay, each of the three cohorts requests accounted for roughly, um, what on earth does that say? A third of the total FABT requests, so consistent measurement was applied to all applicants. Thank you. Always helps to make it a little larger. And applicants' raw score determine their percentile ranking within their review cohort. Now, for people who don't know, and just a reminder for those of you who do, these are panel scores, so these are outside subject matter expertise, they're not internal panels. The award recommendation translates that percentile ranking according to the following tiered structure. The minimum percentile, 100%, 90, 80, well, you can see that part, 80, 70, 60 and 55, which is the award uh request percentage. Keep scrolling, please. When funding breaks were close, the grant managers refer to the panel feedback for additional application inclusion at the lowest funding tier. Sometimes you'll see that, and you'll see this in the next slide or two, where some scores are very, very close. When we get to that point, we definitely go straight to the panel feedback. These are the panel panelists that were chosen for this particular cohort and read what they say to us in terms of why they prefer um one panelist's score over another one. Okay, in the recommendation, the largest award is $387,500. The smallest award was $9,000. The average was 103. Continue. Okay, now this one, everybody's really gonna have to look at. Kevin, are you there?
I am, Gretchen, hi.
Hi, dear. Can we make this a little larger? I'm not sure who can see if you can.
I think Patrick is is sharing this. And by the way, folks, if you uh, if you have your sidebar active for participants or chat or Q and A, if you X those out, then your screen will get a little bit larger.
Yeah, continue it. There we go, we hope.
And there's also an enlarge on WebEx. Just press that large, the plus, and it'll it'll become very large.
Yeah.
I just found that, yeah.
Okay, Kevin.
Oh, this is me. All right.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna chime in, but I'm gonna take, let you take the lead on this one.
Thanks, Gretchen. Um, and and thanks to everybody for uh for for being here this evening. Um, yeah, Gretchen, uh, hit the hit the gist of the uh of the recommendation and the methodology behind it. Um, that was the text. These are the images. Um, and so what you're looking at here, um, and I think you have this printout, but forgive me if you don't. Um, it's identical to what shows up on your screen. Um, is a uh, is just a breakdown of the numbers on how the uh the ranking affects each one of these uh of these three cohorts. Um, and then we will go uh and take a and take a closer look at each one of the cohorts. I believe those are the final a couple of pages on this slide. So um draw your attention to the top left-hand corner and you'll see that percentile chart again that Gretchen just uh eloquently described on the last page. Um, and the way that that goes essentially is, the first thing that we look at is the overall ranking that comes out of each cohort. These come from the panelist's recommendations. We don't look at their raw scores per se. The first thing is we look at the ranking, um whether there were 15 applicants or 17 applicants, who came in first, who came in second and so on. Um, generally, our practice is, our preference is that if uh if an applicant comes in first place within their cohort, we really want to fund their request at 100%. Panelists have a lot of value in that, and so that is reflected here. If they're, if they are in the 100th percentile, that's just another word for saying they came in at the top. Um, we're saying we would like to fund them at 100%. Um, and then the the percentage drops there, it drops at at 7.5% um, which is really a number that is designed to uh to accomplish two goals. One of them is to make sure that everybody that we fund receives a meaningful investment in their project. Um, and uh because we all know what happens if it if if a an organization has to stretch in order to come up with the remainder of that funding, um, it can be pretty complicated. And so the lowest funding tier here is still funded at 62.5%. And for FAB projects, these are typically pretty adjustable and so they can remove some expenses later on. But uh, but it funds, it funds these projects at a meaningful percentage and it allows for uh for an appropriate break that matches up with what the panelists were seeing within their respective cohorts. So that's what the left, that top left-hand column is, and you can see the breakout of the awardees there in that final column. Um, the uh, the other area here, this part here on the right of your screen, the top part is the breakdown of what we were looking at according to Ward one through eight, of course, um, in number of the applicants and percentage of the awardees under this recommendation um and what that would mean for the total funding. And we can look at and see how that manifests in each one of their respective cohorts. Um, it shouldn't come as too much surprise that the the most number of applicants came from Ward one and two. Um, and therefore, it's not too much of a surprise to see that most of the awardees would be in Ward one and two. However, it is pretty notable to look through the rest of the wards and see how that manifests. Um, unique for us this year um is that we're two, there were two awardees from Ward seven, which is a, you know, pretty underserved arts and humanities region of the city. Um, and in this recommendation, we're recommending funding both of them. So that's pretty notable for us. Um, there is a little bit of a bar there on the left-hand side. I kind of glanced over it. Um, it says optional trigger. Um, and this is a uh, this is another part that that Gretchen was referencing where the formula is pretty draconian, you know, if uh, if if there is 0.1% of a point separating a funded candidate, funded applicant and a non-funded one. Obviously, the, in looking at the panelist notes, the panel sees great similarity between these two projects. They see a lot of value in funding both. Um, and so that is where we are making the request to stretch that formula, make it a little bit less draconian. And so that is where we are making the request to stretch that formula, make it a little bit less draconian, make it truer to what the panelists were requesting. So we would encourage additional funding according to that. And we can see how that breaks out. But just remember there that that funding is to an extra point. That's going to matter when we look at these other sheets.
Hey Kevin, Kevin, just a question. The percent awarded column, that's the percent awarded of the requested submission to the percent awarded of the overall population of people that submitted requests for award. Can you just define that column for me?
That's a great question, yeah. So that awardee column is responding to the applicant column, not of the total pool, but the applicants from their respective ward. So just looking at Ward 1, we had 13 applicants. Under this recommendation, we're recommending funding 9, which represents 69%.
Got it, thank you, thank you.
Go to the applicants column. Okay, go ahead.
So this is a great summary sheet. If everyone is okay with that, I'd like to take a closer look at how it breaks down into one of the cohorts and then we can flip back here and maybe these numbers will make a little bit more sense for everyone. So Patrick, can you scan to the next page?
Fab T Panel 1.
I'm not quite seeing it yet. I don't know if it's showing up on your screen.
No, it's not. Patrick, we need Fab T Panel 1. There's three sheets after this, so it's the first one. There, yeah.
Is it this one?
Yeah, uh huh.
Okay.
That's the first one, yeah. So yeah, as Gretchen said, we broke these up in their respective cohorts by organizational budget size. And so for the first cohort, these were the smallest budget organizations that were applying. There's still a lot of variety here. The smallest budget organization was that 12th ranked one. They have a $12,000 budget. The largest one is the seventh place, I believe, which is 639. So obviously a lot of variation there. But from the pool, this was the smallest, and we would see some greatest similarities in terms of applications. Makes it easier for the panelists to look at the applicant pool at large. So the first thing to look at is who came at the top of the pile according to the panelists. They requested a project of $99,000, and we would recommend that they be funded to that full amount. And it kind of goes down from there. Although the project budgets change according to each one of these very unique projects, the funding ratio should stay the same. The rationale should stay the same. And so they're funded slightly less percentiles as they go down until we get to the eighth ranked, which is where we see a natural break. Now, in the formula, we're recommending funding until the 55th percentile, so technically that would be at number seven. And if you kind of scroll over and you see the title percentile there, it's right next to variance, and in between variance and organizational budget, you see that comes in at 57%. So that would be where the break is, that project. But the next ranked applicant, the variance there was less than a point. It was very close. The panelists saw a lot of value there. And especially looking at the applicant that came immediately afterward, where you see a 2.3-point variance, and followed by a 2.7, that seems to be a much more natural break. And so we would recommend extending the funding formula to be inclusive of that additional project.
Kevin, I have a question before. Just go through that, just for an example, because this is the panel I did and I'm not. If you look at number seven and eight in their rank, one of them got, I think seven got 12,000 and eight got 93,000, yet eight scored less than than seven.
You're right. That's correct.
Just go over that for me, please.
Sure, it's a great question. And Fab is a really unique program in that regard, because these are facilities and buildings programs. And infrastructure, which is what this funds, varies so much for organizations. Organizations can have a physical shell and, you know, apply for new HVAC, a lot of them are, new roofing, new floors. These are really expensive projects, and we see a lot of them year after year. But smaller organizations that don't necessarily own their own space still have infrastructural needs, maybe web-based, maybe in terms of computing hardware. Both of these tend to be very popular right now with COVID conditions. Very important for an organization, important for a smaller organization, but coming with a smaller budget. And so funding the project according to the ratio does mean that there's going to be a variance in the amount that's given out, but we do still fund the same percentage of that project.
Good.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, good explanation.
Yeah, thank you. And just look at number five. Yeah, five got the largest amount of 387,000. And they came in five, so.
But it was the smaller percentage of what they asked for.
Right, you have to look at what they're asking for.
And look at the percentages on the right.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
Next to the green one.
Right.
Down to 62, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Pleasure. And so that's essentially how this looks. The next two sheets are going to look very similar, so I think we can kind of go through those a little bit quicker, although happy to continue to take questions. The final two, the final four columns here are mostly for reference, which is interesting. This is tracking the NACOC organizations that are applying previous applicants and first-time commissioned applicants, which is all interesting information for us to capture. But we can look at that collective on the main sheet once we're done looking at these three cohorts. Patrick, we're ready for the next page. Thank you.
Yep.
So.
Number two, is that where we are?
Yep. And so this is the midsize cohort. A lot of variance within these organizational budgets, but still within their third of the cohort. And so very similar to the first one, and what you'll see with the third one as well, that first-place organization requested, unfortunately uneven, $127,297. Although it is not rounded off in the way that I would like it, we would recommend that they receive 100% of their fund according to the panelist's intent. Or what the value that they saw within that project. And then a similar funding formula is stretched down below. There is a little bit more stretch in this one in that, remember that 55 percentile number? So that would take us to applicant number eight for here. So if you look at eight and scan over to that percentile column, you'll see 56%. That would have been typically where the break happened. But the next several applicants came in so close. The next applicant came in at a half percentile, the next one came in at 0.7 percentile, and the one after that came in at 0.1 percentile. So a lot of value there perceived from the panelists. So we would like to go with the next, what we see as a natural break, which is applicant number 12 that came in at 2.1 points below. And so you can see Gretchen pointed out that great column next to that pink kind of purply one. It says, which is the overall percentage of their project funding. And you'll see that goes from that 100 down to the 62.5. So any questions on this one, we can move on to the final. Great. And so I take us to cohort three. This was our final day, and these are our largest organizations. If you look at that final column, the one that tracks our NACOC members, you'll see that the majority of the NACOC organizations that did apply for this fund applied under this cohort, obviously. But we are still treating this cohort the same. So a top-ranked organization requested $250,000. That's the maximum amount they could request for this specific project. So we would recommend that they receive that funding. And then it scans down according to the formula down to that 55th percentile, which would be at number seven. But similar to the other two, we see a lot of value in stretching this down to be inclusive of the following two applications, especially because you see quite significant, the largest break of all, actually. With applicant number 10, there was a 4.25 break, followed by another series of significant breaks. So the panel saw a very clear difference between applicant nine and the other applicants to follow. If there aren't any questions on cohort number three.
Kevin, Kevin?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm new to the commission, so I'm just learning the formula and the way it slides. So bear with me. The NACOC reference on the last column there, is that beyond the other allocation of NACOC funding, or is that inclusive of the established NACOC funding?
It's a great question. So NACOC funding is a portion of the general operating support funding. But NACOC organizations are allowed to apply for this Fab program as well. And so this, I'm not sure if this answers your question, but this would be in addition to their NACOC grant.
It's in addition to, because that's what the legislation specifies.
And this would be also a specific project. This does not go into the general operating support for any organization. It goes to a project.
Right. Yeah, I'm just trying to learn. Thank you very much.
It's a lot Maggie, I know. Okay. That's our report Kay.
Okay, so the recommendation. We need to move for a vote. Does someone move that we accept this recommendation?
Yep, I would like to move that the recommendation of the grants panel be accepted.
I second.
Great, then I'll call the roll for your votes. Alma?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Yes. Cora?
That's them.
Derek?
Yes.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Thank you. Is Mariah here? Or Natalie? Rona? Quanise?
I'm doing an abstention.
Okay. And Maggie?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, the eyes have it, so it is passed. Thank you all very much. Okay, so next, and good work. That's a lot, three intense panels, you know, a lot of analyzing. So thank you Kevin and your team.
Yeah, I just really want to give him a really good shout out. He did a lot of work on this. And if you thought we had questions here, you should have seen the questions in the grants committee, and he was able to address every one of them. So thank you Kevin.
Thank you both. I want to praise Carrie and Ben, although he's not on the call. Those two were really instructive in this too.
Yeah, I want to add my thanks to Kevin for the panel. I mean, my panel on the first day ran smoothly.
Yeah, I think it's worth mentioning.
Kevin, all three panels.
Yeah, I was on one of the panels and I was particularly struck with the choices of the panelists, their professional background, their professionalism they brought to the discussion. You know, we worry about those things, but it was really a perfect situation. I thought it was really well handled. Very, very good. Next, we have unfinished business. And in that, we have to vote on the recommendations and findings from the task force on equity, inclusion, and belonging. As you all recall, we had a special meeting. In that special meeting, we went over each one of the recommendations. We asked for any discussion. We had some discussion when it was required or asked for. And so I think now we're going to present the entire package for a vote. Do I have anyone that would like to move that we accept all those recommendations from the task force?
I second it.
The package.
Okay, thank you Rona and Jose, seconded it. Before it got put on the floor, but we take your second. So to vote on this, I will call the roll again. Alma?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Cora?
Double yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Gretchen? Gretchen?
Mute, headed on mute. Yes, definitely.
Jose?
Yes.
Thank you, Kimber?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Quanise?
Yes.
And Maggie?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. So I think that's terrific. So those are now passed. So is there any other new business that anyone wants to bring forward to the commission?
Kay, I just wanted to acknowledge the work of the task force and how important that many months of effort was. And personally, I wanted to thank you and Cora for advancing the agenda and getting us to those very strong recommendations. I think it'll have at least a step forward to getting to better inclusion. So thank you for that.
You're welcome, and I'll pass that to Cora. But thanking everybody, it was six months, six months of continued focus and conversation and work to get to where we did. And I appreciate everybody listening well to the recommendations and supporting them, so.
I want to give a shout out also to Reggie Van Lee and Elaine. They were totally instrumental in walking us, getting us through six months of this.
I agree. Yeah, I agree with Maggie and Gretchen. It really was a lot of work and thank you everyone for keeping it together. And Reggie really and Elaine did a terrific job. And Brian, the original Brian with the Y, I think it was. That also started with us, was a lot of work, so. And thank you Kay for the leadership and Cora for bringing us together and doing this.
I think the special shout out goes to Cora. It was Cora's original idea, and so she's the one that started it. And she's the one that saw it through, so thank you Cora. I think we're all proud of that. Is there any other new business or comments anyone wants to make?
I have a question. Kay, you had brought up the bylaws committee, and there was some type of conversation where you said you've done some adjustments to the bylaws. Are we having a bylaws committee anytime soon?
Yes, and I've been in touch with Carl and Jeff. And just today, I've gotten a lengthy, I've been talking about moving forward with it. Just today, I have an as-yet unread lengthy email from Carl and discussing how to take the next steps forward. And I plan to do that within the week. You'll be hearing from me because you're on the committee.
Can I just ask, can we get a copy? For, I mean.
Sure, sure, sure. The committee is Rona and Quanise and Natalie and Cece. I don't know if I'm leaving anyone out, but so I will be in touch with all of you all this week, and you'll see the bylaws that we're going to be dealing with. And then we'll bring it to the whole commission.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I think the recommendation said, the last recommendation was establish an idea committee. Are we going to do that?
I'm not sure. Maybe, but we need to talk about it because while that is one idea, there's been some discussion about the fact that everyone on the commission is so equally interested in the tracking of the task force's recommendations, that it might be that it's a report each month for everybody to hear how they're tracking. Or each quarter.
I have a question on that. Who's going to do the tracking if in the committee?
It would be, all of us know what they are. We organize that. I mean, but it would be the staff, her run and her staff.
Can I just say something Kay?
Yeah, I can't hear very well for some reason.
And it might be me, but anyway.
It might be me.
If we're going to leave this up to everybody like we did before we started the task force, then we're kind of back where we started. I think it was a great idea. I think it's a reason that there should be an entity. I think it's a reason that there should be an entity whose sole purpose is to assist the other commission members and committees to in, to, to follow through and follow up and make sure it happens, not that they're resisting it. But sometime you have to have someone who has an eye and who's looking at it specifically and strategically and targeted to make sure that it happens. We have the recommendations. I'm sure everybody is based on the vote, ready to follow the recommendations. But I agree with Gretchen. I think that was a good idea. I don't know why you think it needs to be diffused into the whole commission, because I don't think that's going to work. Because if it hadn't worked in the first place, we probably wouldn't be having a task force. And there are committees that are established in equity, in this equity world, to do just that. And we've seen many of them come through the emails. I've even seen you send a few. So it's just like the city council has a committee to ensure that equity issues are are relevant and enacted in every aspect of what they do. I don't know why we should do it differently. If we don't do it differently, then what's going to happen, quite frankly, is that it's just going to disappear into the ethos, because nobody specific interest in it. They have an interest in doing what they are assigned to do, which is a lot of work. The arts, the arts, the public arts committee does a lot of work. God knows that there's a place in heaven for Gretchen, for all the work that she does. So I think there should be a committee that makes sure that we can be there for and look for and be helpful in making sure this happens. So I would submit that that last recommendation on the task force, that was the last recommendation to be followed up on.
But would be the last, there was no recommendation on the task force specifically about a committee.
Oh, well, I, I thought there was.
Oh, I don't think so.
Gretchen, didn't you say that?
I thought there was also. I don't have a.
It's in front of me.
No, I don't think so. But in any case, the the question of having a committee is is out there to be decided. And some people have just said they wanted to be part of it. They didn't want it just over with one committee. They wanted it to be a report that came to all of us at our regular meetings. But that's fine. I mean, we can all decide.
We have a whole, full board meeting. Who said it? So let's discuss it. We could discuss it right now.
I can't, I thought we had it, too. I thought it was at the bottom of the list or.
It's in the, it's in the, in the new proposed bylaws, there's a section of the bylaws that discusses committees. And I think that's where we'll decide to put this forward or not, so.
It does say in the.
We haven't seen those. I thought it was the task force recommendation.
It is a task force recommendation. It says create idea standing committee. I'm looking at the document now in the second quarter.
That's what I.
Chair.
Really, really, then I apologize. I knew it was coming from a bylaws rewrite. I didn't remember us talking about it. I think that was added on there anyway.
So Kay, because we voted on that.
Whether it was added on or not, we voted on it. So it's, 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 it should be.
Okay, sure, okay.
So, so I thought, since we voted on it, then we are sending a committee. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Yeah, so I'm, can I just put forward a motion? One, I'm happy to volunteer to be on the committee. But second, I would love to put forward a motion to have Cora chair it.
You know, Maggie, it's up to me to decide who's on, who's the chair of each committee and then to appoint the committees. So we'll get to that.
I think we can get past that. The bottom line right now is that we voted unanimously on accepting the task force recommendations, and the idea committee is.
But that is interesting. Just let me say that when we were at the task force meeting, we were deciding then what the recommendations were going to be. That was not one of them. It got tacked on last time. I I knew that was up for consideration. I didn't even remember that it was part of that.
Well, whether it was, whether, whether, it doesn't matter.
I'm not against it. I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just surprised, but we will move forward with it.
But we voted on it unanimously.
I understand. I understand. We did just vote on it.
Unanimously, so there is going to be an idea committee.
I hear you, Gretchen. Who knew? It didn't used to be on the task force recommendation. But it clearly was when we had the meeting.
Can I just talk for a second? You're saying general things. You're saying things like, well, some people think that we should just make it for everybody. And then it got tacked on. So tell me, one, who are some people? And two, who tacked it on? Is there no, who, somebody, somebody came out the sky and tacked it on? It was a part of it. We voted on it. We agreed on it. So why is that still up for discussion?
It's not. And now that I know we voted on it, it can't be, you know, it's not. I did not know it was on the task force recommendations.
So what's the bottom line? We have, we have an idea committee?
Uh, yeah, this is, I didn't, we're just talking about nothing. I don't know what we're still talking about.
Right. A new business topic, this kind of dovetails, and this actually is a question more for the staff. And so I've been working with other, you know, I work closely with other commissions, specifically the Maryland State Arts Council. And one of the things that I've noticed is the content of poetry out loud. And I wanted to know how connected are we to that program? Because looking through a lot of the logistics of the program, there's a lot of race issues, honestly, within that program. And so I wanted to know how connected are we to looking at, like re, like trying to reevaluate whether or not we should be having that program? Like, is that mandatory at the NEA?
Hi, Quanise. David, I defer to you, but yes, it is mandatory.
It is a required program. But that's the first I'm hearing about it, Quanise. I would be happy to talk to you about it.
I mean, just look at the, just look at the content that they're, you know, making people recite and looking the way that they're judging. Like, it's a lot of bias issues. And then I just think that, frankly, it's a racist program. But if we're connected to it for the NEA, that's fine. So that just means I need to.
No, no.
I'll just read out to the NEA and just, you know, speak my piece to them, too, because it needs to be a re, the program needs to be reevaluated.
Right, I I think they do assess it. And I know the P O L coordinators meet every year. You know, I think all of the coordinators, I know myself included, when I first came to it, I was, none of us were very keen on having a poetry recitation competition for both the reason that it was poetry recitation and it was a competition. But the students who participate are very diverse, and they seem to really, really enjoy it and get a lot out of it. And each state has the ability to make it their own. And, you know, we focus on the process. We send teaching artists into the classrooms to work with the students and the teachers. This year, we're creating a prep video that is a preface. It'll be a sort of an asynchronous piece before the teaching artists are beamed into the classroom virtually. So it's, it's very, very diverse.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's your end. I think it's more of the actual program itself. So it's not the commission's fault. It's the program itself.
Can I ask the question? Well, how is this, wait a minute, Quanise? Is there a connection between what you were talking about? Because it isn't. Put a pin in it.
Oh, no, this is new business, so I was pivoting.
But we still on the one topic. You're changing the topic before we complete the process.
But Kay, Kay said. That wasn't, Kay was, Kay was saying that the ideas committee was there.
Are we talking about poetry out loud? Can we have some order here?
So why don't we all sing?
We cannot.
I said.
We are talking about poetry out loud, Cora.
Use your battle.
Talking about poetry a lot. We were talking about the ideal committee, and when he started talking about poetry, all that was a wonderful topic. But let's finish what we were talking about first. I'm not going to put up with this.
We had. Cora, Cora. I'm going to have you muted. Listen, we finished the discussion.
I thought it was finished. I apologize, Cora. I thought it was finished, because I thought, that's why I was kind of pivoting.
I thought we were finished.
You were right.
Why are we not finished, Cora? Why are we not finished?
Are you asking that question?
Yes, because we have decided there will be an idea committee. We have voted on it. There's nothing else to discuss. What else is there to discuss?
Well, I have a question. And then we can complete it. When? When are we going to establish it? Because that's the next step. After all this work, the next step is to make it happen. I want to applaud Alma, and I want to applaud Gretchen and whoever else who have just taken the initiative for, for and have promoted and done things that are in line and in the spirit of equity. But in the days and the times that we live in, we cannot play with this. This is as serious as anything we've ever done. And actually, I had a conversation, just to be honest with you. I had a conversation with the chairman of the city council, Phil Milton. We talked about the equity commission. And he said, I said, we never had one before. He said, how could you never have one before? Well, maybe because you've only been, they've only been independent for two years. I said, but they've been involved, they've been existing for a zillion years. So it's time for us to do things the right way. And let's not try to deep six it, but everybody's going. So yes, when is it going to happen? That's the question.
I'll be appointing it within the month.
You mean in the next week? Because the, in the month is next week.
I can appoint it very soon, but I know that.
Now, you want to talk about, now, Quanise, if you want to talk about the the poetry have added.
No, no, that could be a part of the ideas committee. I mean, I was just going to get up as a conversation. I I thought y'all was finished.
I thought so, too, Quanise, or I wouldn't have called on you. Is there anything more that you all want to discuss about poetry out loud?
Kay, if I may, just Quanise, I I thought the subject had been put to rest about the idea thing. So in reference to poetry aloud, Tom and I love poetry. So we have gone to a lot of the poetry aloud events. And there is amazing diversity. The kids are wonderful. They truly enjoy it. We, the judges are diverse. And and there's a good response from the public. I think if there's any ideas you can bring to the team that puts it together, that would be a good idea. But I think the program is wonderful, and we should keep it. It's just if you have any improvements that we can do, they can be brought up. But it's one of the highlights that I think many people look forward to. And we used to have even a bigger event. But we, it's, it's wonderful. And thank you, David, for what you said. Thank you.
I agree, Jose. Last year, there was a person who was the emcee, the host, and delivered a poem that I responded to, just like we all just responded to the National Poet at the inauguration. I mean, it was wonderful.
Exactly.
Content, I think. Yeah, I really have always enjoyed it, and I've found it very diverse.
And and sometimes, Kay and David, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we encourage that they create their own poetry. And sometimes they recite their own, their own poetry. And even though past winners or people who are local poets do participate in the event. So it is really an amazing mixture of people. Thank you.
Yeah, it is very good.
Just an aside from that, when Dolores Kendrick was alive, she was our poet laureate in DC, and she had been here for many, many years. And during that time, we were very, very focused on the humanities. She was actually housed at the commission. And I know that the mayor is going to be appointing at some point a new poet laureate. So that'll all be tied together. But yes, we, we have been involved in that program, just not a lot recently.
Are there any other questions?
Kay, if I may, on on the event, fellow commissioners, dome arts virtual event that is going to be happening, the webinar for grants on the twenty eighth that Haran mentioned, I know all of us got their invitation. Try to participate. And if you need the link, let Haran know. And she can resend it. So you can send it to arts groups and 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 performing groups in your area, in your ward, so they can attend. Because, Haran, we still can, more people can join that art seminar on the twenty eighth, right?
Absolutely. Thank you.
So it's good that we, that we show up to help support our staff. So we are visual, that visually the community can see us. And at the same time, do send it to anyone that you know, because like that, people get informed. That's part of our mission as commissioners, is to make sure our, our, our ward is informed or any. It doesn't need to be or, anyone you need that needs a grant should be aware of this meeting. So we should be all from, from Kay to Cora to me, to everyone, sending it to our contacts. I think it's important in this, especially in these times, that they know we're visible and we're here to listen and we're here to tell them what's happening. So please, on the twenty eighth, we'll see you all.
And I'm really glad you're underscoring it.